Down is the Cupertino Planning Commissioner. And he was the PAPA Bay Area Executive Director. And he's a community activist. Welcome, Down, soon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Cupertino. This is a joint event by A PAPA, Semen, S V C and U E F A. We're here to share our opinions on the discussion of I C A five. The most important is we will learn what we can do about it. I C A five is built that can possibly limit the percentage of Asian students in U C and C S U schools. This will affect the students in Mountain Vista, Lindbrook, Saratoga, Cupertino High, Homestead High, Fremont High Schools. Our goal for today's meeting is to make your voice heard. In the state and the federal government, we voted for many elected officials to represent our ideas and needs. We're here to inform the community and bring your opinion to these elected officials to work on your behalf. Let's wish that we have a productive meeting. Our community will become stronger, more aware of our political responsibilities, be more active, and work together. Please register to vote and lobby your votes count. Being with us today are community workers, elected officials, and candidates. We thank them for their support. Sitting us with, sitting us today, uh, let me start with, Peter Core, who is a candidate. George Young, candidate for the Republican Council of California. Yan Zhao, candidate for, candidate for the Big Council of Saratoga. All above the candidates against I C A five. Your partner? Yeah, he is now in here, but he's, he's here to support Chinese community to vote no on the I C A five, too. Barry Chen, Barry? I just saw him, he probably go outside, use loudspeaker. He's the Cupertino City Council, candidate for the State Assembly. Please, there, Chen? Your partner, your partner, she's a high school, she's a full member. She has a fortress, she has some strategy, so if you have any opinions, questions, you can talk to the elected official. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Rich Kumar? Yeah, please stand up, Kevin Chen. Rich Kumar, candidate for the. Without further ado, I want to bring my friend Chris Chang to come to the stage to introduce one of the organizations. U E F A, thank you.
Thank you, Down. First of all, U E F A would like to thank everyone for coming here today and to learn about an issue that deeply concerns all of us. U E F A founders organized a protest against Jimmy Kimmel's hate speech in San Francisco last year. And after the protest, we decided that we need a stronger platform, so we started U E F A. And our mission is to promote Asian Americans and encourage us to become more engaged in our community, whether it's political involvement, social mobility, or community volunteering. So we would like to build a bridge between those who want to get involved and the resources that are available. We can provide that bridge. In addition to co-hosting this panel, U E F A has launched a video series that will be soon released for the public. We have also started a series of community seminars. And we are also in the process of conducting a voter registration drive under A PAPA's leadership in Santa Clara County. A lot of people say all Asian Americans don't care about politics, don't care about democracy. But those people should be here today and see for themselves. We have the strength and the will to become more responsible citizens and shape the future of this great country. And if we translate that passion today into an everyday commitment, there's no limit on what we can do. So when you go home, please get involved with your community, stay actively engaged. Finally, I'd like to thank everyone on the U E F A team who has been working tirelessly behind the scenes over the past two weeks to make this possible. And thank, thank you, everyone, for coming, welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Down, and Chris. Now I'd like to introduce the moderator of today, Dr. Albert Wong. Albert Wong is the Chair of the PAPA Bay Area Chapter, and he's a physician at Palo Alto Medical Foundation. And he, of course, is a longtime community activist. Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Stone, for the great introduction, and thank you all for coming. And I'm so happy to see so many Asian Americans getting involved, since I've been doing this for some twenty, twenty-three years or so, and I really see this type of excitement. I hope, like Chris said, that you will always stay engaged in whatever way you can. It does not have to be politics, it may just be the B D A, it might just be the local church, Chinese school, Boy Scouts, local chamber, Rotary, anything that you can engage with and get to know the people in your community. When something like this comes up, you have a lot of friends to talk to instead of among ourselves. So what I want to do first is provide some background information, because there has been a lot of misinformation out there about this and that. And there's, the newspaper unfortunately has published, to my media friends, have banned the claim sometimes with the information that are not correct. So I just want to give a little bit of background information on how this came about. That California education system, basic California education system, that some of you may know or may not know. And then we'll go ahead with the moderated panel discussion, who will have very distinguished guests to be with us. So first of all, to understand the system, the California education, higher education started in nineteen sixty with the master plan that was proposed and approved by the legislature and signed by the then-Governor Pat Brown, the father of the current governor, Jerry Brown. And it basically has three sections of schooling. The top twelve point five percent of high school graduates will go to U C's system if they should choose. They're guaranteed a space in the U C system. It's not the University of Berkeley or U C L A, it might be worse at Riverside, but you promise to see. And the one, top one-third of high school graduates will be promised the C S U, California State University, if they should see. And the rest can go to community college, or other private schools, or whatever they should choose to do, or go into the trades. And this is how California became such a great state. It built many, many universities, but mostly in the cities, unfortunately. And has been, has enjoyed worldwide reputation to be the best public education system in the world. And that's probably why some of you are here, if those who immigrate to California instead of elsewhere. Um, now, let's go for some cases in between. Is this better? Yeah, sorry, I was trying to speak louder as well. There are some backgrounds in legal cases related to affirmative action that I think many of you will not be aware of. While I was at U C Berkeley attempting to enter medical school, there was a famous case that would decide in nineteen seventy-eight, the Bakke versus University of California. Mr. Bakke was applying to U C Davis Medical School, which had set aside sixteen of his hundred seats for minority, underrepresented minorities, and he was not able to get in, so he sued. The Supreme Court eventually ruled that affirmative action, including using race as a criteria, which is the issue at hand here, is legal. However, the quota is not. It could not be a hard quota, a number of people that can enter a certain school. So that's a very important landmark decision, probably by the Supreme Court regarding this issue. And in two thousand and three, Grass versus Bolinger, it's a University of Michigan case, where University of Michigan had a hundred fifty-point system evaluating applicants. And they gave twenty points, automatic twenty bonus points, to certain minority students. And a white student sued and won, Supreme Court ruled that to be illegal. So that type of system is illegal. And in the same year, Gutter versus Bolinger, another University of Michigan case for law school admission. Gutter, because the university used race as admission criteria, Gutter sued as a white student, but she lost. The university prevailed, the Supreme Court ruled, consistent with Bakke's decision that race can be used as a criteria for admission as long as it is not the only criteria and there is no quota. And now, two thousand and three, some of you may know, the Fisher case, Abigail Fisher versus University of Texas-Austin. A white student was not admitted. Texas has a similar system as ours. The top ten percent of students get to go to University of Texas. Ms. Fisher was not in the top ten percent of her class, but there's other ways to get into the schools, and she was not admitted. And other students of minority ethnic background was admitted with similar abilities and qualifications. That decision was actually punted by the Supreme Court. They took it back to the district court, basically said you have not considered all the evidence carefully enough. So that is still pending, and I would imagine it will take a couple more years to resolve. So that brings us to Y S C A five. This is a constitution amendment for the California Constitution. In nineteen ninety-six, the citizens of California had Proposition Two oh nine, which explicitly stated that race cannot be used, including gender, ethnicity, and national origin, could not be used as a preferential treatment criteria for three things. Public education, you all know about, contract contracting by government, and employment, so promotions and employment opportunities. Three items for them. So, since the passage of Two oh nine, there's been numerous and numerous lawsuits from everywhere. And so far, the court has affirmed Two oh nine as legal, meaning all these Two oh nine provisions are still enforceable and are being enforced now. University of California, as well as other schools, have tried other means to attract more diverse student body. So they've used more of a class, socioeconomic class type of criteria instead of race, which of course also benefits some Asian students who are off that class, the new immigrants who live in Chinatown whose children do not have the privileges of attending Mountain Vista, or Lindbrook, or Michigan-Sanchez High School in Fremont, in my case. So in this attempt, they have been able to increase the black and Hispanic student population, although not to the pre-Two oh nine levels. And Asian student population has increased steadily since Two oh nine, partly due to the removal of race criteria, partly just because there's so many more Asian high school graduates now compared to two thousand and six. So, before I start to talk a little bit about the S C A five and what it says, can you raise your hand if you read the complete text of S C A five? Fairly well-educated group, that's good. And has anybody, any of you contacted directly, just not signing a petition or posting a sign outside, but contacted directly your elected representative, or Senator Hernandez's office, by phone, by fax, or by email? A fair number, okay. I would encourage you, after today's discussion, whichever position you take, pro or against, that you will contact your local elected official, and certainly Senator Hernandez, if you, I suppose, if you, I suppose either way, and let him know your feelings, because this is how the civic engagement, political participation starts in the United States. Just to talk to your elected representative. So S C A five does just one thing, basically. It was introduced in two thousand and twelve by Senator Ed Hernandez, on the Diamond Bar in Southern California. And it says one thing, it's going to remove public education from the protection against, for racial protection against racial discrimination is criteria, meaning race can be now used as an admission criteria in public education. Now, this public education initially was the university system, but then it was amended later to say public education. So I suppose it can apply to any education funded by government. But predominantly, I think people here are concerned about University of California, perhaps will actually extend to California State Universities. So, I mean, that's nothing else. It does not state the quota, it does not mean today after this pass, Asian students will be thirteen to fifteen percent of U C population. I think it's disingenuous to say there will be no reduction, as some people have stated in the political circles. But it's also not correct to say that it will drop spontaneously to that level the year after this passes. So that's basically the long and short of it. I hope it's short enough, and I've been able to engage your attention, to understand the situation better. And we're going to engage in a much more detailed discussion with our distinguished panel. Now, would our panelists please come up to the stage?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize one more sponsor, Ivy Max. They have been very supportive of this event. And this event is trying to bring all of us, but without these sponsors, you would not have been possible. And I also would like to recognize my friend downstairs, Hesmer Lowkey, and he doesn't like to talk about himself, but we should recognize him for his service on the Cupertino Planning Commission in A PAPA. And also, he's running for the Cupertino City Council this year, so please support this guy. And I will hand the microphone to Stone.
It's okay, we can just go ahead and start with the moderated panel. First, there's some basic rules about this panel. First, we will have three-minute opening question answered for each of the panelists, and then two minutes we answer each question thereafter, and a three-minute closing statement. The same rule applies, if you agree with something, feel free to applaud and whatever. If you disagree, feel free, well, but don't get too raucous here. But this is an educational forum, it's not a protest against or for anything. We just want to make sure our community understands what we're talking about when we do go out there and do protests and do whatever we like as we feel. First, let me introduce the panelists, who have very distinguished panel guests here. Senator Bob Huff is a minority leader in the state senate. He is Republican from the Diamond Bar area of Southern California, very heavily Chinese-American area of the Gallega Basin. And as a member of the state. As a member of the Senate Education Committee, Senator Huff has successfully authored legislation that offered to reauthorization of the district choice program and creation of the Open Enrollment Act, nationally recognized parent's trigger, albeit charter school and other school options. Senator Huff was recognized as Legislature of the Year by the League of California Cities, California Charter School Association, Citizens Against Lawsuit Abuse, California Business Properties Association, American Council of Engineering Companies, California, Red Cross, and the Inland Empire Caucus, which serves citizens with disabilities. The Children's Specialty Care Coalition also recognized Senator Huff with an award for his work on behalf of children with special healthcare needs, and this especially touches my heart, since I founded an organization, and some of you know, friends of children with special needs. I really loved his engagement in this area. And Senator Huff grew up in the family of public educators and is proud to be a product of public education system. He and his wife Mei Mei, who is with us today in the front, go away. Three sons, one daughter, and six grandchildren. Kind of gives away your age. Next on our panel is Mr. David Laird, who is a president of Community Advocate Incorporated, a Los Angeles-based human relations organization chaired by the former Los Angeles Mayor, Richard Reardon. For twenty-seven years, he served locally with the Anti-Defamation League, a Jewish organization, as both his council and his regional director. Mr. Laird is a final copy graduate of U C L A and attended U C L A law school and earned a J D degree in nineteen seventy-three. We have all yours here. He has been interviewed on his activities by numerous publications, including The Los Angeles Times, New York Times, Wall Street Journal, and many others. He has also appeared in multiple national and international broadcasts, including Nightline, Good Morning America, and National Public Radio, N P R, all things considered in the morning edition. In nineteen ninety-seven, he was appointed by the mayor, Richard Reardon, to the Board of Library Commission of Los Angeles and served for two years as his chairperson. Community Advocates has partnered with two major Los Angeles media outlets to amplify its message on civil rights issues with K C E T's Public Affairs broadcast, Life and Times, the broadcast's weekly segments, and The Kitchen Table. It teams with Airtalk and the N P R's K P C C station to produce quarterly critical issues seminars that are broadcast to the large local public radio audience. He is married to Dr. Ariela Laird and is the father of four children and three grandchildren, also giving away her age. I also have Professor Ling Chi Wang, any of you know him? I personally know him as my esteemed professor when I was at U C Berkeley. He is both a scholar and civil rights advocate. In nineteen sixty-nine, he abandoned his original plan to teach, listen to this, ancient Middle Eastern languages, and participated in the founding and development of the Ethnic and Asian American Studies at U C Berkeley. So he was the founding father of that department. For many years, he headed the Asian American Studies and Ethnic Studies Department in Berkeley. In addition, he founded several community and scholarly organizations, including the Chinese for Affirmative Action in nineteen sixty-nine, Asian Pacific American in Higher Education in nineteen eighty-seven, and the International Society of Study of Chinese Overseas in nineteen ninety-two. He believes strongly in combining academic research and teaching with social and political engagement. He led a five-year fight against discrimination, against policies, admission discrimination policies by University of California back in the nineteen eighties, including Berkeley, U C L A, and also the elite schools at Stanford and Stanford, and won a great victory for us at the time. He also led the fight to obtain justice of Chinese-American journalist Henry Liu in the nineteen eighties and fought for Doctor Wen Ho Lee's freedom in two thousand and one. He promoted the rights of linguistic minorities and fought for bilingual education for immigrant students across the U S, multilingual immersion program for all students from preschool to high school. And he successfully pushed the College Board to develop achievement tests in Asian languages in the late eighties, which we now all benefit. He also played a leading role in trying to build the Chinatown campus for City College in San Francisco, a bit far away from us, but a very, very important accomplishment for people who work in Chinatown, has no way out of there. And the new campus now serves over eight thousand immigrants and working-class people. He has received several awards and lifetime achievement awards for several local, local and national education and professional organizations. But more than the awards, Professor Wang is considered a lion in the fighting for civil rights for Chinese Americans and Asian Americans. I patiently, personally took his class, as I mentioned earlier, and also have fought side by side within, on the Wen Ho Lee case, and recently, the introduction of entry immersion program in Fremont. Some of you from Fremont may have benefited from that effort of Professor Wang. I personally consider him my mentor and the most respected hero in our community. Obviously, as a retired U C professor, I guess I don't need to mention his family to give away his age. Mr. Henry Dir, last but certainly not least. Son of immigrant and born in San Francisco, Henry Dir is currently a senior program officer at the For Freedom Fund, a national funder collaborative, and supports immigrant rights groups across the country. He was, has worked with undocumented immigrant students in their quest to achieve access to higher education. He earned his undergrad and graduate degrees from Stanford University. For more than twenty-two years, he was executive director of Chinese for Affirmative Action in San Francisco, worked to promote the civil rights of Asian Americans and other racial minority groups in employment, education, voting, and access to public services. In this capacity, he has been involved in every Chinese and Asian American civil rights struggle since the nineteen seventies. A former Peace Corps volunteer in Kenya, Mr. Dir has also served as Deputy Superintendent of Public Instructions at the California Department of Education with oversight responsibility for programs that address the needs of adult immigrant at-risk and special needs students. He was appointed by the State Superintendent of Public Education to be the state administrator to bring the Emeryville Unified School District out of bankruptcy and did a great job with that. He also served as chairperson of the California Post-Secondary Education Commission in the nineteen nineties. Active in community education affairs, Dr. Dir, Mr. Dir has helped lead coalition efforts to promote equal educational opportunities and access for immigrant students at the City Colleges of San Francisco, including the new Chinatown campus, serving more than many, many thousands of students, especially immigrant students, as well as raising private donations to support that campus. He has served on the University of California President's Advisory Council on campus climate, culture, and inclusion, as well as the Angel Island Immigration State Foundation Board of Directors. So let's welcome Mr. Dir. Before we start the moderated discussion, we also have invited Senator Ed Hernandez to be with us. And he is not able to, he sent me this statement this morning, so here I shall read. Senator Hernandez sends his apologies for not being able to make it today, but is continuing to meet and hear the concerns from many groups on this issue and hopes to continue a productive discussion that is based on facts, despite much of the misleading information that has circulated. So that is his short statement to us before we start the discussion. After the questions by me, there will be an opportunity for public to ask questions. We have volunteers around with cards and pencils for you to write down your questions. You can do this anytime and give it back to them, they will pass that to me. Now, I will relay them and ask the questions to the moderator, to our panelists, as time allows. And we will rotate the panelists from answering the first and the last question, so to be fair. And the first question is a very general question. Please give a three-minute brief summary of what is your understanding of S C A five? And what do you think is going to happen if it passes? Senator Huff, please.
Well, my understanding of what S C A five is, is what you described earlier. It would remove the prohibition of race, or color, or nation of origin to how we accept people into public schools. The fact that it's silent in all levels of schools should create some concern, not just with our higher education, but clearly that's the focus of us here today. In the sixties, the Civil Rights Act was signed into law. And thirty years later, it was felt that there was a need to initiate Prop Two oh nine to protect, to take race out of it. It was originally believed that a jumpstart was needed, and perhaps the professors over here can better explain it on that. But what Ward Connerly, who was a U C regent at the time, an African-American gentleman, wrote in the ballot statement for this initiative. Today, students are being rejected from public universities because of their race. Job applicants are turned away because of their race does not meet some goal or time target. Contracts are awarded to high bidders because they are of a preferred race. That's just plain wrong and unjust. Government should not discriminate. It must not. It must not give a job, a university admission, or a contract based on race or sex. Government must judge all people equally without discrimination." That was true in 1996, fifty-five percent of the voters agreed with it, and it's true today. Supreme Court Justice John Roberts had a very simple saying that's something that rings true. The way to stop discrimination on the basis of race is to stop discriminating on the basis of race. And so the question that you need to answer is, do you want to hold your elected officials accountable, as we have the opportunity to do, living in a democracy? Or do you want some nameless bureaucrat or committee making the decisions? Do you want it based on merit? When you had your children working after school, when you have them studying while others are out playing, when you grade them, work hard, and to succeed? Do you want them based on merit and their scores? Or do you want it based on some other unnamed, unaccountable committee or person? I think the answer is pretty obvious. The community I live in is very high Asian. You know, my wife came from China as an education visa. She got accepted into St. John's University's master program on merit, and it's a system that works. Now, there's been comments made that the ratios haven't been, there've been other ways tried to get around it, but minority enrollment, according to the data I have actually, has expanded at the UCs, and at the CSUs, it's also expanded, both by percentages and role numbers for everybody except us white guys. And I'm here saying, I want it to be on a level playing field. So I look forward to the robust discussion that we will likely be having here. I firmly believe that merit should be the case. I believe most of the room here today believe that as well, and I thank you for the opportunity to participate this morning.
Would you pass the microphone to Mr. Laird, because we only have two microphones, and certainly-- Yeah, for now, we're going to go down the line. Yeah, for now, we'll go down. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the organizations for inviting me here today, and I think that the impact of SCA V will be a terrible one. It's well-intentioned, that was the most vigorous affirmative action over the past thirty years. By the way, it's an interesting historical angle, first case that our chairman signed by having written an amicus brief, part of an amicus brief in the Bakke case in 1977. So I've been involved in this issue for a good number of years. I think the intentions are all very nice with regard to SCA V, but it begs the question, because it really is a solution in search of a problem. Because if one looks at the data, and I am convinced that the people who authored this amendment did look at the data, since Senator Hernandez said, I quote, "There has been a precipitous drop in the percentage of Latino, African-American, and Native American students at California public university campuses, becoming less diverse, and qualified high school graduates being overlooked and ignored under Prop 209." It simply isn't true. Other than African-American admissions and enrollees at Berkeley, at UCLA, and San Diego, by every other minority group has increased in numbers since Prop 209 was passed in 1996 significantly, and they've all made it on the basis of merit, which is an important statement for their communities and for the community at large. It is, it's just a bizarre notion that you should change the entire structure of the admissions to public education to go back almost twenty years to a period in which people were evaluated on the basis of their race and ethnicity, and at its worst, in the early 80s and late 80s, affirmative action literally had slots set aside at various schools, and if the slots that were designated for African-Americans, or Latinos, or Asian-Americans weren't filled by those particular ethnic or racial groups, no one else could fill those slots. I know that was the case at UCLA Law School when I was there. So it was an approach that was dangerous in its concept, it was awful in its implementation. And we saw that it resulted in the passage of 209, because too many, most Californians realized that something was going on, that the university was less than upfront about, was disingenuous in its denials of what was going on, and the price was paid for the passage of 209. What's fascinating is that in the days, in the years since 209, virtually every minority group, and virtually every campus in the CSU and the UC have done better than they did when there were quotas, their percentages have increased, their absolute numbers have in many cases doubled, and at the same time, universities have become more diverse, because Pell Grant, which means students whose incomes, family incomes are between thirty and forty thousand dollars, have increased at some of these universities in California, up to thirty-seven percent. There are no universities in this country that match with the University of California and the CSU's have done in admission of poor socio-economically disadvantaged kids. So it's not a university, excuse me, of pampered kids who had SAT tutors, it's a third, over a third of the, most of these universities are kids who come from disadvantaged backgrounds. So with a holistic admissions approach that takes into consideration disadvantage, as well as scholarship, the UCs have done a terrific job, and I think, and the CSU's, and it would be a terrible message.